Order of the Library Board of Trustees for Wednesday, January the 10th. We'll now proceed to item two on the agenda, the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Vanderbilt, will you lead us in Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now move on to item three on the agenda, the adoption of the agenda. Daniza?
Chairman, I say we adopt the agenda as is.
I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda of Wednesday, January the 10th, as presented and recommended by the librarian director.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Vanderbilt.
Second.
Second by Mr. Delsey to approve the adoption of the agenda for January the 10th, as presented and recommended. Discussion? Objections? Motion carried. We'll now move on to the call to the public. Daniza, anybody?
None at this time, Chairman.
We'll now move on to item five on the agenda, discussion items. Number one, Sonoyta building update, Juan Valderas and Mary. Oh, Juan, okay.
All right, so a quick little slide. Good morning, Chairman, Board. Just your quick slide here. So these, the photos that I'm going to share with you guys are as of yesterday. So we went out there yesterday and took some pictures of the building. So we're getting close to the finish line. So I think they'll pretty much wrap up everything next week. There's minor, minor. Yesterday, we went, we did a walkthrough. We kind of blue taped a few items, but there is very, very minimal of what they're going to have to kind of touch up and replace one cracked tile or something like that. But that's about the extent of that project is coming to an end here. So we have been in communications with Daniza about how we're going to start again moving stuff back in here. So we have a plan and we'll finalize that plan here in the next week or so to kind of get that. So this is kind of looking from the community center into the library, right? So it kind of opens up into the library there. This is now within the library where the shelving is going to kind of be in this little section. Behind that wall that we see there will be the reception area. And then this kind of looks out into the open space that where we plan to add computers and some seating, things like that. And this is again looking now from the opposite side. So the first little space there is kind of, there's a door right there. That's the existing door. They'll come in and I think that's where it shows that the reception area is. It could change, I don't know. That'll be up to the library. It looks like it might scratch whatever I said. And then, so this is just the whole library. So in the corner, you'll see that is going to be a conference room in the far back over there. And we're ordering some furniture, some chairs and some TVs to kind of go in there. And with that, we have planned a grand opening on the March 6th. So that's going to be, and sorry, the date is incorrect. We had our graphic designer whip this up right before I came. So it's 2024, not 2023. So sorry, kind of missed that. So it's March 6th, 2024. And so we're, we're pretty much all set to go. Like I mentioned, we're going to start moving in some of the shelving. Furniture has been ordered. Internet is good to go. We have one access point at the moment. So there is internet at the building, but we'll have some additional access points there to accommodate any kind of growth that might be needed there. But other than that, that's kind of what I have to report unless you guys have any questions.
You will be here next month? You and Mary will be here next month just to give us the final, your last close-up report?
Well, I might be in DC.
Okay, Mary, will you be here to give a final wrap-up? Okay, let's just, oh, well, let's just see what we can do to have a final wrap-up report. And you say all of the internet is ready to go. We're ready for our grand opening and everything.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, okay. But if not, we'll have Daniza allude to that if she communicates with you over that. But in case you're not going to be here, Juan and Mary, thank you very much. You guys did a wonderful job, very professional. You kept us abreast of everything that was happening. We're very grateful. This is a positive thing that's happening in the greater Santa Cruz County. We're very grateful for both of your works on this. Juanita?
Thank you very much. I had the pleasure of visiting the library this week and it, it looks great. It really, really does. I was happy to see that. And also that the little IT closet was ready to go. That's good to know. Do we have times on that? Will we have a time on this, this grand opening? Does it start, is it all day or do we have a, do we know yet?
Those are, yeah, details are.
Okay. And you'll let us know so we can publicize it. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Oh, and before I move on on that grand opening date and the time, Daniza will inform you of that. Unfortunately, I have to be in Dallas for a soccer tournament for my granddaughter. So I won't be there for that reason, okay? I don't want to create a conflict with my granddaughter because I already told her I was going to be there. So Juanita will be taking over there for me, for the grand opening and everything like that. Anna?
Thank you very much. That just looks beautiful. I'm really excited. I'm excited for the community. I was not at the library, but I was in Elgin, at the Elgin School District. And there's just such a need for that life put back in that community. So congratulations and thank you.
Anything, Christian?
Yes, I just wanted to say that it just looks just great from the initial project where you started and just, it just looks great.
Thank you.
I think so.
Brianna?
No questions, but thank you for all the work and the updates and dealing with everything that you shouldn't have had to deal with.
Thank you.
Santos?
No question, but also congratulations and thank you for the investing in our, our community and see how we can add on some other projects and services and possibilities for the families in the area.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
And for the families in this area, how we can add some other services and elaborate more.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Santos. Mr. Delsey?
I'm sure that the residents of Sonoyta are going to be very pleased with the upgrade of their library services and the support that they've always extended to support the library system. So congratulations on the effort.
Thank you.
Okay, Brian?
Thank you. What is the capacity of the internet in the building?
We have a two gig circuit. So two gig, two gig bits of speed out there.
Okay, so how many laptops can, I don't know what, what the capacity is in terms of units and in terms of pieces of equipment.
It's, it, for, I mean, it's, it will handle the planned, any kind of future growth out there for, for the size of that building. I mean, I don't think you could fit, unless everybody's streaming Netflix at the same time, you know? I don't think you could fit enough computers to kind of saturate that, that connection out there.
Okay, I hope so. Thank you very much.
But the capacity is up to the fire marshal. Is that correct? Were you talking?
Yeah, yeah.
He determines the capacity, the fire marshal determines that.
Right.
And they'll put the signs up there, cannot exceed this capacity. So that's up to the fire marshal and the Sonoyta Fire Department area there.
Right.
Okay. Anything else, Brian?
No, no, thank you.
Juan, Mary, once again, thank you very much. Thank you for your commitment to enhance the literacy of all of the community members here in Santa Cruz County.
And I just want to point out that we do have partners that we are working alongside with WIWA, you know, and a few others. And there's additional spaces that are not reflected in these pictures that are there that, once you kind of go out there, you'll, you'll be able to see and be available to the community as well. So we do plan to offer additional services to, to the community out there. So, but you'll, you'll learn more about that here in the, in the, in the coming, coming days.
On those partners that you have, if you could give those additional names of those partners to Daniza so she can give it to Juanita to make sure that they're recognized at the grand opening, if you would please, okay?
Okay.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to item two, security issues. Lieutenant Bermudas is out of town. He did tell Daniza he couldn't be here, but he'll be here for our February meeting. On item three on the agenda, presentation of book, Fire Heroes, Maritza Lynn Herrera.
Good morning. Good morning, Chairman, Board members and friends of the library. Good morning and thank you for, thank you for what you do for increasing literacy in our county. That's part of what I love and what I do. So thank you, thank you for your time as well. My name is Maritza Lynn Herrera. I am a bilingual children's book author. And just to talk a little bit about myself before I introduce the book, because I, I have some history behind the book. I grew up in Nogales Sonora, Mexico, and I came to the United States when I was 18. I didn't know English. I learned it through school ESL, English, reading, writing, until I got my certification through the U of A, my bachelor degree in early childhood education. And then I have, through the years, my Stanford certification for nutrition. It took me a lot of years to do it because I didn't know the language. But during those times, I was a teacher for a preschool program for 14 years. And I pretty much learned English going to school and also talking to the same children. Before, when, when that happened, I, there was pretty much no bilingual books, like in English and Spanish. And we're here in southern Arizona, sometimes when I was reading to the children, I was able to see they, they were not connecting with the words because I was sharing the story in English and then translating in between so they can catch up the words. So that's when I started, you know, thinking about having bilingual books and exposing everyone through literacy by bilingual books. Working as a preschool teacher, a lot of the times I saw children wanting to draw on the books because they loved the story. So they also wanted to add something about themselves. I believe that was my, what I could catch up from them. So I started also thinking, I want to do bilingual books, but I also want to do at the back of the book, something for the teachers where they can also extend their lesson plans or for the children to extend their activity, expand their knowledge and have a workbook at the end. And I, I can say that I read thousands and thousands of book through my career and none of them had at the end a workbook for them, so, or bilingual on it. So I put my first bilingual children's book, this was my first one. I, I put it out during the pandemic and it's called If I Eat My Fruits and Vegetables, Y como mis frutas y verduras. And it talks about what can you accomplish when you eat healthy? And at the end, it has a workbook that talks about how can you expand, you know, your knowledge through, like if the children have not emerged into like the writing, they can just draw, they can imagine and draw, like what can you accomplish when you eat healthy? My second book then was released just December 19, worldwide. My first book, I, I put it, I was, I did the whole work and I put it through all these platforms worldwide that we can have it. And I was able to present it to Daniza back then during COVID with our masks in and put books for, for the library around here. Then I, I did some work at the superintendent's office and I put together the mobile library when I was able to go around Sonoyta, Rio Rico, Nogales and present reading, present books and going around the schools. And then I put my second book out just this time through December 19, worldwide. On the first one, I was able to travel the East Coast, talking, the big libraries, bring some ideas. I talked about some ideas with the superintendent's office, the library, because at the end, this is where I live, this is where I work and this is where my passion is about literacy. So I love my community. I love to be reading to children. When I, when I launched my second one, I wanted to do it here in, in my town. I am a resident in Rio Rico and I wanted to show first here to the world what we have, what we have in our Nogales, what we have in our area, who are our fire heroes in our town. So I write my book, it's called Fire Heroes. My husband is a fire captain in Nogales, so I'm very proud of his work and of the work of all first responders and what they do. So I started just writing two years ago, my, this second book and, but about what it takes to be a fire hero. Then I started to think about our landmarks here in Nogales. So I put our 1904 courthouse here. And, you know, we talk about, you know, they respond to fires, they respond to buildings, they always respond with respect. I wanted to show a tribute also to the 19 firefighters, the past and on, on, on Flag Staff 10 years ago. And so I mentioned that when most people run away from danger, that they stay to save and protect and that they're here to aid with passion, bravery and strength. So on their helmets, I put 19 just as representation, as a tribute for, for, for them. I also have our historic Vimeria Alta, 1914, our building. So I know for what I was able, you know, to get to know and the information, I wanted to show it as an old fire station. So I put it also on our, on our landmark. I was just, my, my point and what I wanted is, was to show worldwide who are, who we are, where our roots, our strengths and the bravery of firefighters worldwide. I also put the border here and just mentioning that when it's time to lend a hand, borders do not exist. Firefighters support their brothers from other town, states and countries when needed. And the book goes on, it talks about, you know, what they do, what they have to do before they get into the firefighter career, that they have to study, they have to do certifications and when they finally graduate, that they work together as a team. And the families also, you know, wait for them, that sometimes they, they miss holidays, they miss important, important birthday celebrations, important family plans. And, and it's okay at the end, you know? I'm trying to explain to all the children, it is okay because that's what they do and we're here to support them. So at the end, I have some, the whole book, it's bilingual, but, and I have fire stations from Rio Rico, another one that says bomberos, just to put it in, in Spanish. And at the end of the book, there's a firefighter showing up at their house, celebrating Valentine's Day on February 16, two days after. And then at the end, it says, you know, like, okay, you know what it takes to be a fire hero. So let's jump into action. Let me teach you how to call 911. Let me teach you how to stop, drop, cover your face and roll. And, you know, I, I show different, different, different plans for children to, to get to know on their workbook. That way they can draw, they can do things and figure your escape plan, do not touch medications, even if they look like candy, things like that. And then at the end, I mentioned, okay, I think you're ready to be a firefighter in training. Here's your certificate and here's your badge. The book is now worldwide, even in places I couldn't imagine. They're like in Japan, in Australia, Germany, of course, in the US, in Mexico, Canada. And, and I wanted to come here and make myself available. I know I've been doing some volunteer time at the library to going to read to the children. I did that with my first book. I've done it with summer camps around here and I am available. I'm very thankful for the work that the library, the Friends of the Library, the board does because I was able to see different activities that they get to do in the library and children wanting to get there to, to do different, different things that it's, it's just not the book by itself, but it emerges and it goes together. So I'm very thankful for all the ideas that you have. I wanted to show just some pictures. Let me see. Yesterday, this was a picture, let me see the view. That was a picture when I was building the mobile library and then my helpers there was like the electrician, the people that put together the, the inside, the painting outside. And then this was in Indianapolis when I presented my book over there, the first one. The second one was when we volunteer at the library, labeling all the new books for the, for the mobile library. I took my daughters because we needed help labeling them and putting them together. This was recently with Congressman Cisco Manny. I talked to him about my book. He was very impressed about my bilingual books and what I wanted to show to, outside to the community and, and the messages that I have on my books. And it was a presentation. And then this one, it just takes one minute if you would like to watch it. It was yesterday, Kegan 9 went to my home and they asked me to talk about my book because they, they heard. So my book last week, it hit worldwide bestseller. I was in the top 10, so I was number nine on the top 10 as a bestseller in all the platforms. So they sent us, Amazon is the one that puts it there outside for all the people, like bestseller books. And I was in 198 and I was like, oh my gosh, if I can just be on the top 100s because they will advertise it and show it. And then the next day, I was number seven. I was very excited because again, you know, it's just our community, it's a small community, but I know all of us, what we do, we do it with a lot of heart. So I was just excited to share all that. So Kegan 9 came in. I have to cut and paste it into the. If not, I can, I can go on the internet. Oh, it did open. Thank you so much. Thank you, Carina, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Children, as we all know, they learn so fast. They're responding to other questions that they get from firefighters. I wasn't sure about it before, but when I changed, maybe I didn't say it in the wrong language, didn't know English. She learned English at 18 and became a teacher reading to commit. So I will bring the book and read it and wrote it. Some of the children, they're trying to make it before. After seeing how many kids didn't understand English, she knew she had to do something. I was always teaching them. We need to have more bilingual books. People were around. That was. Even though she did not teach anymore, she still reads to kids. This is very funny, they get out of it. Her bilingual books to kids once a month, experience their whole childhood experience community. She asked her books to help the child. I would love for children to get involved, to control, to, to another. She continues to refer her books to children monthly to help expose them to both languages and teach them about the history she incorporates in the books. Reporting here in the process of 9/19, we're in Kelly, Kegan 9.
Thank you, thank you for your time. So this is, this is about my, both of my books and I, I appreciate everything you guys do and thank you again for your time.
Thank you, Maritza, for your presentation and thank you for writing those bilingual books. They're really great. Daniza showed it to us and I've, I've read, went through your, the book on the fire heroes. Very nice.
Thank you, thank you very much. I enjoyed that, your talk and look forward to reading your books. I assume they'll be in the library system. Great, thank you.
Anna?
With my background in bilingual education, more than half a century, I am always excited about bilingual authors and it's great that you live here in the county and you're doing that. I know Ronnie Capen was brought up in Nogales, but she didn't start writing her books until she moved to Tucson. So, and, and the fact that, that you write about eating habits, which is really important because of all of the childhood diseases that we have along both sides of the border. I think that, that is vital for our families to have that book and read that book. And then the firefighters, I mean, I, every night, I thank the firefighters, I thank the police, I thank the immigration, I thank the hospital for being there for, you know, having people work 24/7 so I can sleep well. And I do sleep well. So great job, Maritza.
Okay, Christian?
So yeah, I agree. I attended also your ceremony.
Thank you.
The old courthouse and I thought it was just great, the bilingual books and everything and met your husband and, and yeah, just, just great, what you're, what you're doing and, and putting, you know, our Nogales and on the map, you know?
Thank you.
And just nationwide and worldwide now, as you said. So congratulations.
Brianna?
Maritza, thank you for everything you do. You've done so many things and inspired so many people, not just here and, well, now you say, all over the world. And I'm very glad that I get to work with you and I get to see all of your, your stuff. And a big thank you to all firefighters, all first responders this weekend was a little scare for me and I had the firefighters there to save me. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Santos?
Maritza, congratulations and, and thank you for all the work that you do. You, you are like a Swiss knife where you can do different things, connecting the community, working in economic development through the agricultural property that you guys have, working in, in the media, working with the school, working with the kids, nutrition. So everything is, is a good hit and good for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate it.
Mr. Delsey?
Congratulations on your effort. As a parent of a bilingual teacher who for 32 years has taught in her home district with the Chandler Unified School District, it's been quite an experience to be able to see her. it's been quite an experience to be able to see her work in her class. I did a lot of presentations on the Pan American vision in her classes. And she went on to continue and even went into the science teaching program with NASA with a bilingual setting background. And so it's very interesting. I'm concerned for what's coming out of the state of Florida in banning books and has thrown bilingual books into the collection that they want removed from libraries. So I wonder if in your experiences throughout the country, have you encountered any problems for having and promoting bilingual books?
I love that you asked that question. I did. I think we're gonna be famous for our wall picture. I was very excited when I share in Indianapolis my book. Indianapolis is the holder of the biggest firefighter conventions. I was there last year. And I was very excited, because I thought I was going to join a publisher that they invited me to as a children's book author. They saw the illustrations and my story. And everything was ready. I thought I was, they asked me to join their team. And I say yes. When they review my book now, you know, page by page, one thing after another. They told me, I'm sorry that I was going to, that they were not gonna be able to join unless, well, that was not gonna be able to join. Then I say, you know, may I ask why? That way I can just get more information, since I'm very new on this book relationship with authors and everything. I just wanna learn the why not. So I wrote it in an email. Then the person didn't send the answer as an email. They called me. And they're very well-known authors for books for firefighters. I was very excited about that. And so they asked me, well, it's a no unless you're willing to take the Spanish out and you're willing to take the border picture that you have. And I say, well, you know, if that happens, you're taking away my essence. I'm Mexican. I'm Mexican. My roots are there in Nogales. And I speak Spanish. He's like, well, we did that about it. We thought about you might say no because of those reasons. So what about if we put it in French or in another language? And we put instead like the Canadian border? So you know, with the heavy heart, I had to say no, because again, they were very well-known and the authors were just amazing. A lot of people know them. They were taking pictures with them. They're very famous. But so the board told me that they weren't going to be able if I didn't remove my Spanish or my border, because it was very controversial for a children's book. So then, you know, I move on. And then I found another way in. But yeah, it's true. I didn't know that. I didn't know how big it is outside for people to see like a bilingual book and not wanting to go full force into it, not saying yes right away. But I think it's important, our work and what we're doing for what we strive, that way they can see us as strong and pushing forward to a second language in Spanish.
That's very good. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Brian?
Congratulations. Your presentation, and it really reflects the emotion and your passion for this. And it's very, very impressive.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you so much. And I am available to work with the board, with the Friends of the Library. Yes, I am very passionate about what I do. And I am excited to start here on our community and then take it worldwide.
Maritza, felicidades.
Muchas gracias.
Mucho orgullo que tenemos en usted.
Muchas gracias.
And thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Let's move on to item four on the agenda, selection of nominating committee to recommend chairman of the board. Anna had this one. Anna, you want to start this off, or you want me to? Go ahead. Go ahead.
So my thought is to send out a questionnaire to board members about what makes a great chairman, chairwoman, member of the board, and how we can move this forward working with Danitza and the library staff to just continue the work that Danitza and the staff is doing and give them the support they need. So I was thinking of a questionnaire with a little bit of an open question survey and then get back to the group and see what we came up with and then maybe make some suggestions.
Okay. There is, this nominating committee has to be the selection of the board. The bylaws say that it's not an appointment by the chairperson of the board. It is an appointment by the board itself. Okay. So my last meeting will be the month of May. So I conclude my, so I wanted to put this on the agenda so that everybody, everything is prepared. So when you select the chairman, that person can take over in June right away. And even though we're having some new members coming in, we have a vacancy. But we're just gonna continue to do what we have to do here. So the first thing is that we can do here is have a nominating committee, which shouldn't be more than three members of the board. And then have the nominating committee, because there's still plenty of time for you to, if the nominating committee wants to have questions or so. Are there three members here who are interested in serving on the nominating committee? Anna? Juanita? Anybody else?
Christian.
Christian? Okay. So then I'll entertain a motion to go ahead and nominate Juanita, Anna, and Christian to the nominating committee for chairman of the board. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Brian. Is there a second? Second by Anna, to nominate Juanita, Anna, and Christian to the nominating committee and to make a report back to the committee at our next meeting. What is the outcome and what you're planning on doing? Discussion?
Second? Is there a second?
Yeah, there's a motion and a second already. And we're under discussion. Objections? Discussion? Go ahead, Juanita.
Just to say that, as you mentioned, in our bylaws, that vacancy is filled by appointment. So we don't really have a process for this. And I think it's a good idea to have a nominating committee for any time we need to appoint someone to fill a vacancy. So it's good to see. I don't know if we want to include that in our bylaws or not, but.
Isn't it in the bylaws, Brian?
No, it just says maybe filled by appointment, confirmed by a majority of.
The nominating committee?
Yeah, I thought we read it together that it was in there.
There's a nominating committee for members, right?
Not for members, if for the.
That could be for the August, for the full time. We are filling a vacancy. So.
But we would handle it in the same manner. It's a nominating committee for officers.
Yeah, it's just not in the bylaws.
Oh, Brian, okay, just to make sure. Well, we can discuss it, but let's make sure that that is in the bylaws, if it's not there already.
Reading the bylaws, quote unquote, a nominating committee may be appointed by the board at the August meeting.
Right.
After the election of officers. The committee shall present a slate of candidates for the selection of officers the following year.
So they give a whole year for that nominating committee before. We didn't have a nominating committee there. Now we have a nominating committee, and we have a vacancy for them to make a recommendation.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
All righty. Anything else under discussion? Objections? Motion carried. Let's move on to item five. I don't want to bypass your comments, Anna, but you will make that recommendation when you come back at the next meeting.
Yes.
Okay. Bylaw revisions, Brian?
Thank you. Well, I was a little bit confused, because we received, I was to be the chairman of this, or the lead anyway, of the bylaws revision. And we received in our packet and by email a revision. And I don't know who the author is of this revision. Danitza, you sent it to us.
Did the attorney review it?
No, the attorney has not reviewed it. I just sent out what was revised. I see that the highlighted parts did not go through. I will send that out again with the names of the members that did the different revisions. So this is just a compacted form. And just so you could have something for now. But I will send that out, the highlighted one, after the meeting.
Well, that's fine. I just didn't know where, you know, as I said, who the author was. And I wanted to know. All right, well, there's still probably some changes. This is a proposal, is a draft that we received. And everybody needs to review it. And again, one more time. And send me any changes you have, or send them to Danitza. Either way, it's fine. And we will try and present to the board at the next meeting, the February meeting, a proposed bylaws revision, a formal bylaws revision.
Okay, so then if you have any suggestions for any bylaw changes, some have already been made. Danitza will compile that, highlight them on a revised bylaws. And then, but if you have any additional ones, please send them to Danitza, and then she'll send them out to everybody else. Remember that the bylaws state that we will go ahead and review the proposed changes at one meeting. And then you have an additional 30 days before we can vote on the bylaw changes. So if Brian presents it, and it's already been approved by the city attorney, and he presents it in the February meeting, all we do is say, yes, we do agree. Add any changes then. And then at the following meeting in March is when we would approve the changes to go into effect. Does everybody understand that? Is that correct, Brian?
I believe that's correct.
So that everybody's aware of that. If it's not gonna happen next month, it's just gonna be a presentation, and then we'll vote on it 30 days after that. Okay, I don't think, is there anything else, Brian?
Well, we could get into discussion of this revision, but that would extend our meeting today, and so.
Well, if anybody has anything you want to add right now that you have, it would be appropriate right now if you have anything in particular that you want to bring out.
Well, there's one very important item that I caught, and I'll just mention it right now, is under the terms of the Board of Trustees, this revision includes a term limit. But in the final, trustees will serve two consecutive terms. And that is in the second paragraph under terms. So that would be a very substantial change in the way this Board of Trustees has operated in the past.
So. Okay, well, here, if that's in there, it's because somebody turned it in to Danitza to put in there. But when that draft comes in, it comes back here. Then we'll have that discussion on that. And then 30 days later, we'll vote, we'll take a motion, a main motion. And then we have amendments to the main motion. Where like if, as an example, we can say we don't want that or we do want it, and we vote on it. Okay?
And one other item that I caught at the bottom of page two, it says absences, three unexcused absences will result in termination from the board. Define.
Unexcused.
Unexcused.
Right.
Define, and who determines what's excused or not excused? So that needs a definition.
Concur. So we'll work on that.
Okay.
Anybody else have anything? Juanita?
Just to clarify. Next month, we will be presented a draft with all of the changes suggested. And you will tell us which changes, you know, have been suggested. We'll be able to see that. If that generates discussion, then we may have to have another draft, or at least a final, prepared for the next meeting, because it won't be completed if we're still discussing it.
There's no problem.
Okay, so it'll be not March, but maybe April. Okay. Yeah, just wanted to clarify that, because I think.
This isn't a rush rush thing, okay?
No, of course.
We want to take our time and do it right.
An idea. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, we want to move on to the next item on the agenda. I think we brought enough clarity there. Physical expansion of Rio Rico Library, Brian?
Thank you. Well, as I've mentioned in previous meetings, I'm a proponent of expanding the physical capacity of the Rio Rico Library. And at a meeting with Danitza and Mr. Verona a week ago, what I proposed was that Danitza organize a little tour of the library and then the building by county officials, members of the library board, and the library staff that want to participate, to walk around and dream and throw out ideas about this. So this simply will come back for Danitza to organize this a tour and including Supervisor Ruiz, because I know he's a proponent of this, Mr. Baldetis and/or any other county staff in the library, any of the library that wants to participate. I think that's where we need to start.
Okay, so do you want this? We can direct Danitza to put this down for discussion items for the next board meeting with a plan of action. Is that what you're asking for?
That would be fine. And see, if she's contacted the individuals, perhaps found a date.
So you're responsible for that. Okay, we'll do that. Anything else on this item from anybody?
Simply from my point of view, I'm going to be out of town March 15th to April 15th for openers. Thank you.
Ed?
I think we will need the presentation of the supervisor's district within that. And I think it's Molaera and not Ruiz. Ruiz has the Nogales district.
Oh, I stand corrected. You're right. It is Bugs Molaera. It's not Ruiz.
For any of the actions that are gonna take care in that county building. Yeah.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, let's move on to the next item on the agenda. Library tours for new board members, Brian?
Thank you. And this, again, carried over from last month's meeting at our little confab on last week. We decided that instead of having, moving the board meetings from site to site, where participation is uncertain and of course, it's unable to record for the city in the minutes of the meeting, that a great substitute would be for Danitza to organize a tour of the county libraries of the new members that haven't had a chance to see them. Of course, we know that in March, we'll all be in Sonoyta. So check off one there, and that leaves two, Rio Rico and Toubac. So Danitza will get together with the new board members and see when it's convenient to drive out there.
I'm a little confused, Brian. What is it specifically that you're asking?
I want the new board members to see the county libraries.
The outline library, but they're all under the Nogales Santa Cruz library system.
Correct.
But you just wanted to see the outline.
Facility in Toubac and the facility in Rio Rico.
Toubac, Rio Rico, and then they're already going to Sonoyta. And you want Danitza to go ahead and organize that for them?
Correct.
Okay, that's just independent you with them, okay? All righty, got it.
Thank you.
Okay, number eight, library friends updated, Ed?
Yes, I just want to report that Friends continues to supply the free library unit that we have at the Safeway store. Marva and myself have been resupplying books. I've gone to the warehouse in Toubac and extra books that were available, especially children's book, we've been able to distribute. So we will continue to do that. And as we get the other units built, we'll continue to do the same. I want to congratulate Anna in the recognition that she was able to post with the proposal that she has made also for free libraries here within the city of Nogales and the other sites that she is choosing. But the coverage that was given to that by the Nogales International, I think, hopefully, is going to encourage our community people to participate and utilize. The one at Safeway has been well-stocked and well-utilized by our citizenry. So we're very happy that we continue to do that. Friends is gonna be meeting at 11:30 after this meeting today at the main library. But we will continue to provide that, yeah.
And here again, I do want to make sure, because how about a little discussion here? Because. because the Friends of the library do a lot of positive things for our community, especially helping the library with financial resources beyond the scope of their budget to go ahead and promote literacy throughout the communities of Santa Cruz County. So I just want to make sure that everybody is clear on your mission because I was still deeply disturbed at the last meeting when you used the word target of our members. And there's no room for that kind of vocabulary here. We all acknowledge what you do, how well you do it, the volunteers that are involved in it. And I just was disturbed, I left very disturbed at the last meeting with that word, okay? And I just don't think that that usage was appropriate for all the good things that you are doing.
Well, it impacted three of our members that used to sit on this board, and I was concerned that that occurred because I never saw any reasoning for that type of action that removed them from participation. And they very reluctantly have continued to voice their concerns within Friends about the action that was taken against them. And that's why I used the term. I thought the term was appropriate and unexpected, but that was the only term that I was able to come up with.
Okay, well, I see your view, and I hope you understand my perspective though, too. Okay, let's move on here then to discussion and possible action to approve the minutes of November the 14th, 2023, and December the 13th, 2023. I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes of November the 14th, 2023, and December the 13th, 2023. So move. Motion by Mr. Delsi. Seconded by Mr. Yeskas to approve the minutes of November the 14th, 2023, and December the 13th, 2023. Discussion. Brian?
Yes, I'm a little bit confused on the attendance of the December 13th meeting. Review that. It does not include the names of Brianna, Christian, and Santos.
December the 13th?
The second meeting.
I'm just going to stay, I know. IT needs to update the list, and they're working on it. That's why it didn't come out correctly on that one.
Okay.
It will be, it will be correct for this meeting.
Okay, all right.
Oh, okay, so that Marva's name will be removed because she was not reappointed, and she's marked as absent?
Yes, IT will be fixing that.
Okay.
Okay, anything else?
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Objections? Motion carries. We'll now move on to board reports. Current events summaries must be brief, and there cannot be any proposal, discussion, deliberation, or legal action taken. Juanita? Anna? Oh, you...
I think you're saying Danitza when you're saying Juanita.
Oh, Juanita. Did I say Danitza? Okay, Juanita.
He said, I just didn't hear that correctly. Oh, well, we all heard about Sonoyta. I'm very excited about March 6th for our grand opening, and I'm excited about getting all the books back and the furniture into our newly remodeled library.
Anna?
This afternoon, or this morning, I'm going to meet with the Friends as a member of the Friends because Books for Classrooms in Green Valley, who has brought in thousands of dollars of books for the community, not just for the classrooms, would like to partner with us, with the Friends, to be able to get books in our tiny libraries, in our preschools, in our homes, especially because we, you know, of our rural area, and make the libraries the heart of the distribution of books to get people into the libraries again. So hopefully, Friends will support this and let you know next time.
Okay, thank you, Anna. Christian?
So can I, can I go back a month, just real quick? Just to report on the time capsule.
Sure.
It was a great success, I think. If you go into the main library, it's a statue sitting there, and it's, I thought it was, it just represents everything that libraries represent. And I think there's going to be more added to it, maybe, here in the future, but that's it.
Thank you. Brianna?
Just to report that the Santa Cruiser will be making monthly visits to the Nogales Library this coming year, so something to look forward to.
Good, thank you. Santos?
I'm just very excited about to belong to this board, but also very exciting to participate in the future tours and know more the capacity that we have.
Good, thank you. Mr. Delsi?
I have nothing else to add.
Brian?
Thank you. During the upcoming month, I'm trying to get to, excuse me, tried to get together with Danitza and once again, figure out what we can do with the books in storage in Tubac. And pursue the avenue of the consulate, I guess.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move on to Library Director's Report. Danitza?
I will have Sandra Mascherena start off with the library board packet overview. That way, the new members get a feel for what's in the packet, what's going to be added or taken off. And Sandra, come on down.
You have to go to the podium, Sandra.
So all the statistics and everything, I do just want to remind the board that the yearly statistics are compiled, kept by Sandra, and I do my report for the state library at the end of the year. This year, I completed it by December 13th. And go ahead.
So you want me to tell them about the statistics?
The packet overview, the library board packet, what's in the packet.
Okay, so the library board packet comes with all the information that you need to know for that month. We have what they discussed here, what you discussed here, the plans, what was good, what was not so good, what you're working with, and you will be aware of everything that happens during that month. In the libraries, the three libraries right now, the fourth library is once Sonoyta is working. The statistics tells you how many books, how many people, the programs. It has everything, how many people come to the library, to the programs, what kind of programs we have. Everything that goes on at the library is counted for. And then after a year of those monthly packets, all the information plus much more that doesn't, that's more, more specified or I can't remember. Help me! You went to Peru, Mr. Brian. Come on, Brian.
You want to, what?
You weren't even listening.
I was studying your statistics.
The more, más especificadas, más...
More specific.
Yeah, more detailed, okay? Because that packet shows for the state library, how many fiction books, nonfiction books, children's books, how many were used, how many we bought, where they went to. And it's so much information that the packets have that I want to ask you a favor. I had people of the board, I'm not going to say names to protect the guilty, but they don't read the packets. They've gone to the library and have asked me information that's already in the packets. So I know some of the board members are not reading the packets. They're not really reading what the packet is all about. And that will help everybody. You to make good suggestions and see, and tell us if you think we could improve in any way our way of working. So it's important, at least for me. Yes, I really take pride in what I do. I would like for you to really read the statistics and the whole packet. It is important because that's what you are, it's part of your work and part of our work at the library. And we need each other.
Okay? Thank you. Go ahead, Danitza.
And now, Carina, we'll talk about the teen Christmas posada, some Lego activities, storytimes, and then I'll go from there.
Good morning. Yeah, so just an update that staff continue to be really busy, even of the holidays, and families were out of town. They have programs going on. There was a team posada, Lego activities still each week, storytime. Now we have storytime at the Nogales Library. And I have a copy of the new programs for the next month. I'm just going to pass them around. It's a Nogales one and a Rio Rico. And we just continue to invite you guys to come and look at these events just to see how many children are coming in. And yeah, just like Sandra mentioned, if we can improve anything or any ideas that you guys have, we're more than welcome to take them. And staff will be attending different trainings in the next few months in, up in Tucson, Green Valley, and in Surprise. So staff is continuing to be really busy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Danitza?
I just want to add that next month is Early Childhood Month. The theme will be behavioral health, and once again, we have partnered with the School of Superintendent's Office. We will be at the First Things First event, and staff will be at the county supervisors' meeting during the proclamation. They'll be at City Hall for the proclamation in February. We're just everywhere. The library's everywhere now. I love it. And February, towards the end of February, I got an email from a living donor facilitator from Banner University, and they will be using our conference room for a community event where they want to talk to the community about end-stage renal disease and how to become a living donor. So there's a lot of, there's talk about the library now. I mean, we've never had, I had never had an email from Banner University wanting to use a library meeting room. So this is, this is great all around. And we continue to loan out the lounge, which is next to the kitchen, and we're promoting the lounge in the Rio Rico library. So the community space is there for the community, and it's being used. And once Sonoyta opens up again, that community space is going to be for the library, for the community members, for the workforce. We are working with the workforce in conjunction with the workforce board and the library board for the ribbon cutting on March 6th, and just a lot of good things, a lot of partnerships all around in the county. And I just want to thank you, Santos, for supporting our teen space and working with our teen coordinator. Thank you. And thank the board and the Friends for the continued support. And here we go, 2024. Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, one more thing. Frank Dillon, the Community Development Director from the county, will be talking about the Vitality District in Rio Rico at February's meeting.
All right, I just noticed I made a mistake here. I want to back up to the discussion items, number nine. That was the approval of the minutes. I'm sorry, Brianna, you're the one who's supposed to be making the recommendation. I didn't see your name next to it. I apologize. It's your responsibility to make the recommendations for the approval or not, so I apologize. I just noticed her, so please make sure you put, put her name on there, okay? It was just an oversight, that's all it was, okay?
No worries. I was also confused. I didn't want to jump in or...
I just, okay. So then, we're okay. Now we're going back to item nine, future agenda items. Juanita?
Nothing to add. We've already discussed what's going to be coming, so...
Anna?
Nothing, thank you.
Anna? That's unusual, Anna. You, big old list. Okay, all right. Christian? Brianna? Besides to get the minutes straightened out with your name on it, we'll make sure. Anything else, Brianna? Santos? Delsi?
I just want to wish everybody Happy New Year from Friends.
Okay, Brian?
Thank you. I hope that in the February meeting, Danitza will have a more detailed schedule for the March 6th meeting in Sonoyta.
Oh, for the grand opening?
The grand opening. Who's invited and times and schedules?
She puts it out, and Juanita, you need to work with Danitza since I'm not going to be there, so you'll have to make some time to work with her because you'll be conducting that opening ceremony. Okay? All right, got it.
Thank you.
Our next meeting is scheduled for February the 21st here, and then we have a meeting March the 6th, but that meeting will be part of the grand opening ceremonies in Sonoyta. We won't have another meeting then until April the 10th, okay? All righty. It's 11:00. And Judith, once again, thank you for the good work that you do on the minutes for us, okay? We're very appreciative of all the good work you do there. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting at 11:08. Motion by Anna Don.
Second.
Seconded by Juanita to adjourn this meeting at 11:08, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.